I'd like to welcome you to the WPCA and regular town council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut. It is Tuesday, October 21st. Time is 6:34 PM. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Deputy Mayor McMillan.
President.
Councilor Abelson.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Goad.
Here.
Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Palladino.
Here.
Councilor Felicia.
Here.
And Councilor Zampanna.
Here.
Okay. Next item is minutes of the previous minutes from the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2025 special meeting of WPCA and Town Council?
So, mo.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Abelson. Discussion. I just have a question, Kathleen, in regards to some of the items on the agenda. I noticed there's only the motion and there's no discussion as far as what it was. Was that, I mean, usually there is, so I didn't know, are we changing the format a little bit, or was it, can we, so I would like to have a motion to table so that we can get that filled in. In particular, the items that I noticed it on, let me just see ones here, when we go down to, it's on page 12, when it starts new business, and it's, item D, there's no discussion, and there was quite a lengthy discussion on item D. And, let me just see ones here. The whole section on Administrator Benefits, number I, J, K, there's no discussion on any of those items, just the motions. And also on item M and, item M, A and B, so if you can just go through the minutes and see once which items, those are the ones I noticed. So, Brian, so the motion was made and seconded, but now...
Okay, so I have, I'll withdraw my motion, but I would just like to say one thing, in fairness to our secretary here. It's been confusing because she's getting mixed messages from some commissions about how they want minutes, so in fairness to her.
And that's fine, yep, no, and that's fine, I understand that everyone likes them a little bit different.
Right, everybody wants it different now.
But we've always had more of an...
No, I understand.
Yeah, so, I know what you're talking about, so. So Bruce, are you going to withdraw your...
I withdraw.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to table the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the minutes.
I'm sorry.
Okay, motion to table was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstain? Motion carries. Okay, now on to WPCA agenda. First item related to the WPCA is correspondence or citizen statements. Seeing unfinished business is none, new business. 1450 Middletown Avenue Sewer Connection Failing Septic System.
Good evening. 1450 Middletown Avenue is part of the reserve area for the White Hollow Sewer Area, and that has various restrictions in order for them to be able to connect to the sanitary sewer. So, one of them is an existing house with a failing septic system. I did, for some reason, the letter from the Health District did not make it into the packet, so I provided that to you on the desk this evening, and that states that the system is indeed failing and will cannot be repaired, so therefore they need to connect to the sanitary sewer. There is enough capacity in the system to handle this extra house, and surprisingly, the house was only built about seven years ago. So, I'm not sure exactly what happened to the septic system for it to fail so quickly, but it did indeed, based on a letter from the Health Department, did fail, and they're not able to repair it. So, they will have to pay the fee to connect the 12,300 and meet the other restrictions. So, is there any further questions?
Okay, so there is a suggested motion on page 30 of our packet. It's quite a lengthy motion, so if someone wants to just move the motion as stated...
I'll move the motion as stated on page 30 for our packet.
Second. Motion has been made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any discussion?
Is the whole one, or you?
I do not know. Is 1450 here? I don't think so, no.
Because it's seven years old, I'm surprised.
I'm sure they are not very happy about it at all, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstain? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Citizen statements and petitions regarding WPCA. Okay, moving on. Regular town council meeting. First item is community events and presentations, and we have two presentations tonight honoring years of service to the town with plaque presentations. So, the first one is for Anthony Esposito, our interim fire chief.
On behalf of the town council, in recognition of service presented to Anthony P. Esposito Jr., this commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for dedication and service as interim fire chief for the town of North Branford, January 1st, 2022 to December, September 4th, 2025, presented by the North Branford Sewer.
I recognize the other two deputy chiefs, that we stepped up together as a team. Mark's not here today, but Bob, Angela, please stand up for a second. All the folks that were in NVFP patch, stand up for a second. These are the people you need to be thanking. These people that go out one, three in the morning, stay there three or four hours, get an hour of sleep, and go to work like nothing ever happened. These need your support.
Our next recognition is for Nick Palladino. Nick is not running for reelection, so this is his last official town council meeting. So, in recognition of service, this plaque is presented to Nicholas Palladino. This commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and contributions to our community, to the town council, from September 6th, 2022 to November 14th, 2023. He was appointed to fill a vacancy, and then his second term was from November 14th, 2023 to November 11th, 2025.
Now we are on to reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First one is economic development.
I left my paper at home, so, sorry for...
Doggy.
The commission met on September 8th to review ongoing strategic planning and housing initiatives. Members discussed the need to fill two vacant seats and emphasized recruiting individuals with marketing, construction, and banking experience. The group reviewed materials related to zoning, affordable housing, and economic growth, agreeing to take stronger advisory role to, and to schedule a joint meeting with Planning and Zoning Commission to align their goals. The commission plans to refine its mission and vision statements and continue developing a five-year strategic plan.
Okay, very good, thank you. Park and Recreation will be meeting next week. I was unable to meet the, in the September meeting as we had a council meeting that night. Police Commission.
The Police Commission met on October 14th, as usual, or a lot of discussion about some of the billing issues, but I think that's something that's going to come up next week in a combined meeting with the town council and the Public Project Billing Committee. The chief did mention that he's down two offices right now, two offices who are injured. He does have a posting up. There's a lot, most of the time, it was actually one of the shortest meetings I've ever attended for Police Commission, I think Walter would agree with me. Two things that did happen in terms of the traffic, the commission approved a four-way intersection stop sign at the intersection of Bill and Ann Streets, and also they approved a child with special needs sign on Ann Street, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Next one is Fire Commission.
So, the Fire Commission didn't meet this month, however, they did meet last week to discuss about the fire engine, which I believe we're going to discuss this evening. Also, for the monthly fire report, there were four fires, 155 on emergency medical, 11 motor vehicle accidents, seven hazardous conditions, 20 public service and good intent, 10 residential fire alarms, five commercial fire alarms, and two mutual aid alarms. There were a total of 214 calls for the month of September. I would like to recognize the Fire Department for the Beach Street fire that happened at quarter after 1:00 in the morning. There was an explosion at 108 Beach Street, and that Engine 1 arrived, and it took them about four hours to take care of it. So, when Anthony suggested that, recommended that these people come out in the middle of the night, and they do their job, and then they go to work the next day, I commend you. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and zoning.
I didn't, I didn't attend the meeting.
Okay, no problem. Finance Committee, there was no meeting this month, but there are a number of items on our agenda later under new business that we will be discussing. Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
There was no meeting this week, we're still awaiting results of some of the testing that's being evaluated.
Okay. And Blueprint Committee.
We'll meet Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yes.
Okay. And, you know, where is that meeting? Is it generally held at...
I believe it's at Atwater, Smith is closed, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't here, because we've been moving meetings...
Yeah, no, 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 it's at...
No, we do it at the library.
It's at the library.
Okay. All right.
I think you skipped in my what, I was going to say that meeting's tomorrow.
I did.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. It's tomorrow night?
Yes.
All right.
It's moved, it's going to be at Stanley T. in the boardroom because of the voting.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Town Managers Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Early voting is now underway for the 2025 municipal election. There are 14 days of early voting for the municipal election, October 20th through 27th, October 29, 31, November 1 through 2, from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and October 28th and 30th from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which is the Tuesday and Thursday before Election Day. Location is here in the Town Hall Chamber, Council Chamber, so that's why you're seeing some of this stuff that's left over here, because they were doing that this morning, they'll be back here in the morning. Election Day is November 4th, with the polls open for District 1 at Jerome Harrison School and Districts 2 and 3 at Stanley T. Williams Community Center from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Due to new state law regarding the cameras on ballot boxes, the ballot box formerly located in front of Town Hall has been moved. The ballot box is now located on the side of Town Hall just past the main entrance, which is the first door on your left as you drive past the building. A completed absentee ballot can be returned to the town clerk's office during regular business hours, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 PM. And we extend our thanks to the registrars, the town clerk's office, as well as the numerous volunteers who are ensuring a smooth early election period as well as a seamless election day. At this month's meeting of the North Branford Veterans Service Commission, veterans Robert Viglione and Edward Donadio were recognized with Quilts of Valor. Robert Viglione served in the US Navy with a rank at discharge of E4 from 1965 to 71. Edward Donadio served in the US Army with a rank of discharge of E4 from 61 to 63. Veterans Service Commission member Chuck Larkins and his wife Claire are members of Quilts of Valor and made the presentation, and the mission of Quilts of Valor is to cover service members and veterans touched by war with comforting and healing quilts of valor. So, we thank Robert and Edward for their service to our nation. Hidden Kitchen is under new ownership, and on Friday, September 26th, we had a ribbon cutting to celebrate that. Joined Mayor Angeloni and Assistant Town Manager Rory Burke, as well as members of the Shoreline Chamber at their location at 2341 Foxen Road. We're excited to welcome the new owners of Hidden Kitchen, Nicole Ladano and Caitlin Kenny. Hidden Kitchen is a cozy breakfast and lunch spot in North Branford known for their fresh homemade menu and special daily muffin flavors. Hidden Kitchen offers gluten-free and other allergy-friendly options and fun and creative coffee drinks that make every visit a little extra special. So, the team looks forward to welcoming the community, enjoy their warm hospitality. They're open 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday, Thursday, and Friday, with breakfast until 11:30. We also had a ribbon cutting for Ascend Bank. They're formerly the Guilford Savings Bank, following a merger that was held September 30th. I joined Mayor Angeloni there as well, and members of the Shoreline Chamber and Assistant Town Manager Burke. The former Guilford Savings Bank was part of a merger, they've been a trusted name in the community for over 150 years, and continue to offer the same service at their location in Norfolk Center and elsewhere, and look forward to continuing to work with them to support residents, businesses, and causes here, excuse me, here in North Branford. We have one other ribbon cutting coming up, that is this week. I Heart Homes Real Estate, we have an upcoming ribbon cutting there, 6:00 PM, 1355 Middletown Avenue, and that's right next to Pop Pop's Coffee Shop. October's National Pizza Month, and our own Bobby's Pizza made the Connecticut Pizza Trail this year to celebrate National Pizza Month. Please check out the great pizza places in Norfolk and North Branford, what they have to offer during the month of October, that's Angiolo's Wood and Fired, Wood Fired Pizza, Giovanni's Pizzeria and Restaurant, La Monaco's Pizza and Pasta, Bobby's Pizza, Bell Foods and Pizza, and Capone's Pizza Bar on Route 80. Our annual trunk or treat was held on Saturday, October 18th, from 2:00 to 3:30 in the Stanley T. Williams parking lot. There was an excellent turnout, as well as numerous volunteers who handed out candy to the trick-or-treaters. There was an upcoming sensory-friendly pumpkin patch and sip shop concurrent event on Saturday, October 25th, Stanley T. Williams, from 11:00 to 1:00 PM. This event is in partnership with our friends at Beyond the Horizon. The annual tree lighting is coming up, December 5th, Augur Field, 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Festivities include ice carving, marshmallow toasting, hayrides, cookies and cocoa, food trucks, and of course, Santa. There will also be fireworks, and there are sponsorship opportunities to support the display, which can be viewed at NVrecreation.com. The sidewalk and curb replacement at Edward Smith Library is anticipated to be completed this Friday, October 24th. And this Sunday, October 26th, at 1:00 PM, the North Branford Land Conservation Trust is having a ceremony to open the new Starry Lane Trail that connects the Atwater Library to the Harrison Farm Preserve. There will also be a recognition of David Sargent, President of the North Branford Land Conservation Trust, as he's awarded the Catch and Coley Award for Excellence in Conversation, Conservation. Members of the council are invited to attend this event. Scrap metal collection is ongoing this week. On your regular trash and recycling collection day, scrap metal includes air conditioners, dehumidifiers, microwaves, large appliances, refrigerators with the door removed, metal lawn furniture, hot water tanks, tools, metal fencing, filing cabinets, furnaces, garbage pails, non-riding lawnmowers with gas removed, outdoor grills, small machines, and aluminum siding. This is not to be confused with bulk pickup, which will take place the week of November 3rd. And as I just mentioned, the town's bulky waste is this fall, November 3rd. During that week, town residents can place bulky waste curbside up to a week before their regular collection day. That would include tree limbs, tree branches, scrap wood, rugs, all cut to less than four feet in length, no thicker than four inches, bundled and tied. It also includes mattresses, box springs, picnic tables, and furniture. It does not include scrap vehicle parts or home cleanouts. Also, North Branford residents can bring their leaves to the Leaf Drop Off Center located on the left of the old police station around Wall Field on Route 22 from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There'll be signs posted on location for directions. No brush or glass, grass clippings. The Leaf Drop Off will be open on Saturdays, October 25th, November 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd. Please place leaves in biodegradable leaf bags, no tape, please, or empty on loose ground. There will also be curbside pickup of the leaves in untaped biodegradable paper bags the weeks of December 1st through December 12th. We'll also have another electronic waste collection event, November 1st, the Public Works Facility on Route 22, from 9:00 AM to noon. Electronic waste includes TV, TVs, CD, DVD players, VCRs, computer monitors, and printers and the like. I was also asked to speak this evening on the subject of the possibility of phasing in the recent revaluation we underwent, and why that was not discussed as an option during our budget deliberations. Section 12-62 CA 1 of the Connecticut General Statutes says that a phase-in is an option a town may consider when implementing a revaluation. Legislative body would need to vote before or during the implementation year before the grand list is finalized. Once that grand list is signed, the new values are in effect, and there is no statutory mechanism to introduce a phase-in after the fact, as it would alter a grand list already certified. To remind the council, the grand list gets certified in January. We only became aware of how significant the impact of this revaluation would be to taxpayers when we are getting the initial budget figures developed, which occurs in March, with delivery to the council in April. Our assessor staff did discuss this with our team and with OPM as well, and it was not offered as an option to the council, as it was already legally too late to do. That said, I would comment that such a phase-in isn't necessarily good policy, and there's a reason most cities and towns opt not to do it. Tax equity gets distorted, the purpose of a revaluation is to restore fairness among taxpayers on current market values. Phasing this in delays that. Owners of undervalued property continue to pay less than their fair share. Overvalued owners pay more than their fair share throughout the phase-in process. Lesser-appreciated properties end up subsidizing the higher ones. A phase-in doesn't just shift the tax burden between property classes, it also shifts it within the same class. Among residential properties, those with little or no value increase end up carrying a larger share of the levy during the early years, because the town must still raise the same overall revenue. Homeowners whose assessments rose only modestly will effectively pay taxes closer to the full value right away, while those whose property increased substantially are allowed to reach full taxation gradually over several years. In simple terms, homes that stayed stable in value help subsidize those that saw the biggest jumps. A phase-in doesn't reduce how much money the tax need, the town needs to collect in taxes, it only changes who pays them. The total tax levy stays the same, it's simply redistributed across property types over several. There's also administrative complexity and cost. A phase-in requires maintaining two sets of assessments for multiple years, complicating billing, appeals, and grand list management. Being required to track shifting assessments year to year increases risk of errors and administrative costs. You're also guaranteeing a tax increase for those you are intending to relieve across the life of however long the phase-in process lasts, which could be compounded over the course of additional budget years as you go through it. It can also create budgetary, budgetary uncertainty. A phase-in makes revenue forecasting harder, because the grand list changes each year for reasons not associated with normal growth. In North Branford, because commercial and industrial properties make up only 13% of the real estate grand list, that smaller pool of accounts ends up carrying a disproportionately larger share of the tax levy during the phase-in period. In effect, a phase-in shifts the tax burden away from the many residential properties and onto a smaller number of businesses and properties. For example, an average residential taxpayer may see a temporary $600 reduction in their annual tax bill, meanwhile, the average commercial property could face a $4,000 increase in the same period. It's a large imbalance, and it's not because commercial property value rose faster, it's simply the arithmetic of spreading out residential increases while keeping the town's revenue whole. Smaller the commercial base, the heavier the impact on each business. Over time, this can create equity problems and economic side effects, discouraging business investment, pushing tenants to absorb higher rents, and sending the wrong signal about how the town treats its commercial community. Another important thing to note is that although assessed values are artificially lowered during a phase-in, personal exemptions such as veterans, disabled, and blind exemptions remain fixed dollar amounts, not percentages. That means the exemption value doesn't shrink when the assessment does, it stays the same. As a result, the next, the net taxable grand list after exemptions becomes smaller than it would have under a full revaluation. It actually erodes the taxable base, because fixed exemptions consume a larger percentage of each reduced assessment. Those are just some considerations on that topic, and I do have our assessor, Dave Ambrose, here with us tonight, if anyone has any questions relative to that. Monthly newsletter, just a reminder, I put out a monthly newsletter that goes out the 4th Friday of every month, the next one will go out Friday, October 24th. The newsletter contains news and announcements from the town, and is a great way to keep up with what we have happening. There's a signup form on the front page of my, of my page on the town website to receive the newsletter. Also, as a reminder, we have town emergency notifications available through Civic Ready. The residents can sign up for it, you can text NORTHBRANFORD, no spaces, to 38276 to get emergency alerts and community notifications. You can also sign up online at northbranfordct.gov/alerts, or call 475-655-0400 to sign up via phone. Notifications go out via text, email, and phone call. As a reminder and observance of the Veterans Day holiday, town offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th. This is not a trash holiday, therefore, there will be no impact on regularly scheduled trash and recycling collection, and we wish everyone a safe and enjoyable Veterans Day weekend, as well as a happy Halloween on October 31st. That concludes my report.
Okay, so before we go on to Permanent Project, since the town manager has mentioned that Dave Ambrose is here this evening, does anyone have any questions that they would like to ask him in regards to Mike's report on revow?
Yeah, actually, I do. I'm sorry, Mike, I really, I, I know you do an awesome job, but this is something that the council should have known about, even though we didn't qualify. We should have, right? Honestly, I have a lot of things to say about it, but that's really all I want to say about it, is that we really should have known about this prior, at budget season, even though it didn't matter. It's really, was really, it's a really important piece of information. That's all I have to say.
Does anyone else?
Yeah, I did a quick search online just now, and according to OPM, it's by law, they had to send out notice to the towns. Can we get a copy of when those notices were received?
When notice, when notices?
It says that OPM by law had to, had to send out notice to the towns about the option to spread the reevaluation over time. So, I'd like to know when, when that was received.
I never read that one, I never seen that statute or clause, ever.
I'm going to call them tomorrow and find out.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't understand.
So, I just want to piggyback on this, because the more and more you read that, Mike, the more frustrating I was getting, I mean, because I just think that something like that, whether it was late or something, it should have been brought to our attention, regardless. It's October, and now we're finding out about this after a lot of heated discussion in town about how this was done, and how it wasn't done, and how we didn't, you know, mention it to the public and/or the community, and, you know, and if there is a notice that came to you, hopefully you'll find it.
No notice.
I mean, because it's just, I was, as you kept reading on and on, I'm just sitting there saying, just, just basically trying to put things out there that make us aware, okay, couldn't do nothing about it, but still, we should have known about it, you know, and the people in our community should have known about it. So, it's very upsetting, and I'm just frustrated over it.
To further on that, so, if I have it right, we would have had to do this in January, correct?
Or before January.
Before January.
Yeah.
Because the grand list comes out in March.
January. They have to certify the grand list in January, right?
So, how come we didn't know about it?
Well, the only reason you would consider doing a phase-in is if you thought that the tax impact was going to be something where you wanted to use that as an option to address. And we weren't aware that there was going to be this kind of an impact until we're formulating the budget.
But why didn't we as a council know that was an option? Other towns have done it, they knew about it, why didn't we know about it?
Well, I mean, again, because legally it wasn't an option on the table, it just wasn't brought up. So I mean, I appreciate the concern that's being...
But why, I understand by the time you found out about it, it was too late, but why didn't we find out so late that it was now legally not viable for us to have that option? If it's been done in other towns, then they must have done it legally.
Yeah, there's a handful of towns that did do it. We just didn't anticipate that this was going to be something that would require that here.
But we might give them the option as a council.
Right, I appreciate that.
And that's, I mean, I read about it now online, people are bringing it up on community groups. And you have people, this was a tough budget season, very tough. Probably part of the reason why I'm not running for reelection because of how tough the budget season it was, how angry people are. This is also an election year. I don't like to bring politics into it, but this is a political forum. Everybody up here with the exception of me is running for reelection. And everybody up here with the exception of me, this could affect them going forward because people are so upset at the council as to what we did with the budget and the budget we passed and why weren't there cuts and why weren't there this, only to find out that we didn't have all the information that we should have had before we voted on the budget. That's appalling to me. I'm not saying we would have taken that. You laid out a great presentation as to options, as to why we maybe shouldn't have done it. Maybe we probably shouldn't have done it, but at the end of the day, we didn't have the option to even consider it, and I find that just astounding.
Well, I can appreciate the concern about not being aware of it ahead of time. Again, the reason it just wasn't brought up as part of the discussion is because at that point when we were developing the budget, it was already too late to do that.
Are you aware that there's a possible second option through legislation with our state rep that would allow us to do it?
That would be one way to address it if you wanted to do that, yeah.
Again, that wasn't brought to our attention either.
So I have a question in regards to, in listening to everything and reading the statute the way it was, so if we would have, now, if we chose to do a phase-in, it's over a five-year period, so basically it's 20% a year until you get to full value, but at any point in time, the fiscal authority has the option to stop the phase-in, correct?
To just continue with it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so if we opted to do the phase-in before you submitted January 31st, the grand list, we went through the budget process on there and we decided this isn't a good idea for us, could we still have gotten out of that at that point?
Before I sent the grand list or afterwards?
Well, no, we submitted the grand list.
At what percentage? Major or 70%?
However you have to...
Normally?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
You have to submit it. So according to the way I heard what was said, is that we would have had to make the determination prior to the grand list being submitted.
Right.
But then, the statute also allows the fiscal authority to stop the phase-in at any point in time during that five-year period.
Correct.
So my question is, if we would have opted, if we were given the opportunity to do the phase-in and we said yes, we went through the budget year and we decided we didn't want to do the phase-in, could we have gotten out of it?
Not in year one, year two, yes.
Okay.
So year one, you had to keep going with it?
Yes, year one, you're up, you're out.
You have, it's like an annual election.
Yep.
So do we have to reaffirm it every year, the phase-in?
No.
Or it doesn't expire until...
It expires after the fourth year, the fifth year.
Because you're at full value at that point.
The fifth year will be full value.
Okay, so you're not reaffirming, you're just carrying forward unless you make an action to stop it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it is disappointing. It's disappointing that there was an option that we had no idea about. And that's real disappointing. Hopefully it's a lesson learned for the future, however, that's a big deal. I mean, if we know there's an option out there, it has to be presented, it has to come out for discussion because maybe at that point, we didn't know what was happening, but at the same time, I believe we did know what was happening. Because, you know, I heard quite a, there was quite a chatter about when we have a revow, things are going to go up. And so that right there, to me, is, it's very disappointing that that option, as little as it may have thought to be, we weren't even allowed to even know about it. And that's disappointing. We're volunteers and we're not involved in this day-to-day thing, you know, so it's, I'm just disappointed.
I will say I'm disappointed myself, and I repeat everything that everybody said here, and like Nick said, this is an election year and there's a lot of people in town that are very upset and we spend a lot of time over the budget. And we, I mean, we were literally talking about laying people off, closing buildings and doing everything we possibly could. Not saying that this could have helped, but maybe it could have, would have loved to have the option. It was a really tough year for us and a lot of people are upset.
I would also echo the same thing. I even this week got a call from somebody asking about the cost of something in the budget. I think the people in this town right now are angry, they're upset, and some of them are suffering based on some of the emails I've received recently.
I agree.
It's too bad that we didn't know about it.
And we were pushed into the revow earlier than anticipated for our town, is that correct?
That's right, yeah.
Can you develop that a little bit and explain some of that to some folks that are listening in?
Well, it had to do with the state trying to sync up certain communities with their revaluations. So ordinarily, we would have done our, if normally scheduled, we would have done our revaluation this coming fiscal year.
Correct.
Instead, we were asked to do it a year early, which was this past year.
When did we get that notification, when we were asked to do it a year early?
Probably in 2023.
Okay, and were we able to ask them to not do that?
No.
So it was forced upon us?
Forced upon us.
Okay, that's what I thought he understood.
Align the revow by county.
Okay, correct. Some counties still have, are on track to do it later on. This information has become more public in this timeframe, is now more available for those towns that were not forced to start the revow earlier.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the comments of the council. I understand that I take them heart. And if I had it to do over again, it certainly would have brought that to your attention. It really, just at that point, that was our thinking, was that it was no longer an option. Certainly, having special legislation done to it really hadn't even occurred to me as a possibility of going in and changing law on it, so that's, I guess that's how I respond to that. I appreciate the comments and understand.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Town Manager's report, Permanent Project Building Committee.
For the North Branford Police Department, the updated balancing report on the HVAC system has been received. We'll be holding a meeting of the Town Council Police Commission and PBBC on Monday evening, the 27th of October, to review the results of Syntex evaluation of the HVAC conditions. As you know, I've been attempting to get Syntex report in advance of this meeting for the benefit of all parties. It has been promised to me and as soon as I have received it, I'll be transmitting it to all the parties. North Branford High School punch list has only a handful of items remaining. Glass replacements are in process, completion is expected this month, and the warranty and closeout period is beginning. Edward Smith Library HVAC, the engineer is preparing drawings. RFP for commissioning agent is in process. The DPW building construction is in process. And the Stanley Williams Community Center renovation project, the building evaluation is complete. HVAC RFP is being drafted. Ceiling tile replacement has been approved under DECD grant. And for the NBHS storage building, there's no update. And that concludes my report on PBBC.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we did receive an email today from the town manager requesting an item be, the agenda be amended for this item.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda. Discussion and action regarding bids for land record vendors and an executive session is requested to discuss attorney-client privilege communication from town attorney to town manager.
Second motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So this will be item 14A on the agenda. 14A. Okay. Next item is citizen statements, petitions and correspondence. The first item is correspondence from Dean Baker. It is in our agenda. It's a lengthy correspondence that we will just have added into the record in there. Does anyone else have any citizen statements at this time?
Madam, there's just one addition, which is from Bill Savistano. It's a brief email, which is in all of your folders this evening.
Thank you.
So it's a brief email from Bill saying congratulations to Anthony Esposito for his many years of continuing service to our town. Thank you to Nick Palladino for his service on the town council, and thank you for all councilors serving our town. Phil Savistano.
Bill?
Thanks, Bill, if you're watching. Appreciate it.
Okay. Any other citizen statements at this time? Okay, we're moving on. Resignation, we have one resignation from Melissa Pantaleo from the Economic Development Commission, which was effective at the beginning of October. So that is one of the positions that Counselor Miller had talked about being filled on EDC.
She'll be missed.
Pardon me?
She'll be missed.
She was very, she was a representative from M&amp;T Bank. I mean, that's where she worked, so she filled a great role on EDC. The next item is unfinished business, discussion and action, use of funds from sale of town-owned properties.
Yes.
Well, we can, we don't have to take, we don't have to take any action on it, but I think Rory is here to report on what's here. We don't, and we can ask questions and then if there's, you know, I know there's a suggested motion, but we don't have to take action on it, on that part of it. But Rory, if you'd like to come up and...
Good evening. Back in August, you had asked that I put together a draft policy. If the funds from the sale of town properties are going to go into an economic development fund, how that fund can be used, restrictions on it and such. And so you have a draft in front of you tonight. Rather than try to put together an exhaustive list of potential uses, I provided some examples. Economic development, you know, is such that depending on the situation, it can be pretty fluid and you may not want to be constrained in terms of what you can do. Rather, I included a list of prohibited uses, things that, you know, have no economic development purposes or may, but it would need to be explicitly linked. And then there's, you know, an approval process that references kind of external applications. That would be, for example, if the council decided to allocate some funds for like a facade improvement program, individual applications would be received and go through that process. Otherwise, initiatives from the town manager, recommendations from the Economic Development Committee would be brought forward for your approval at a meeting. And then there's provision in there as well about how the policy can be modified.
I have a question. I see here you refer to an economic development director. Who's that? I didn't know we had one.
Yeah. It could be, we could change that.
It says that's the person that's going to forward applications. Who is that person?
Well, essentially, you've taken on that role, correct?
Rory's the economic development coordinator.
When we, that position did exist and the gentleman left, correct? And when we hired Rory as assistant town manager, we merged HR and economic development into that role.
Correct.
Right.
But that could be changed as well, if you'd prefer the title going...
I think Marie has a valid point because it's not a current role as it's stated in the policy. So it raises a question as to, are you looking to re-implement that role and what the cost would be?
That wasn't the intention in writing it. We could absolutely change the title.
So is there any, I didn't see anywhere in here as far as Economic Development Commission being involved in the application and approval process for whatever the program, you know, whatever the funds are being used for, would that, would you want to have them involved in that process or are you leaving it? Or is it just for paid employees to take that role?
Yeah, so I think the idea in the approval process would be, like I said, if there were a program to which the funds were allocated that required an application process, it would go through, you know, myself and the town manager in terms of making sure it meets all the qualifications that are laid out in that program. If the Economic Development Committee, for example, they had discussed at their meeting a facade improvement program. If that is something that they wanted to pursue, they would submit the application directly to the council for approval.
Okay.
I think we're talking about the potential of having a significant amount of money in there at some point, depending on the sale of certain properties. I know personally, I would like the committee to see everything and, you know, with you being there, you know, to have a discussion at least on any of the applicants and, you know, where the money's going to be spent and have it voted on so that there's a general consensus. I think it would give people more ownership of it and let them feel a bit more involved in it as well.
Absolutely.
Ultimately, it would come back to council for final approval, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what he was suggesting. I'm not really concerned about the economic development director title. I mean, you could just probably, maybe reworded that, you know, this is Corey's been over, I'm, sorry.
Yeah, that's all, you just got to reward it.
And everything. I think you put a lot of work into this, pretty good. Thank you.
It's a good starting point. You did, I don't want to take away from that. You did a nice job on it. And like you said, like you said yourself, it's a starting point, so.
I can make these changes and bring it back next month if that's what you'd like. I did not provide a copy of this to the Economic Development Committee because the council had asked for it. If you would like them to review it as well at their meeting next month, I can certainly have them.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. And that's fine, I mean, we're...
Just gets more eyes on it to get more, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. I let them know that it was coming, but I wanted you guys to see it first, so.
Economic development also works with Chamber and other entities like that. We may be able to take this document and get ideas of what other towns are doing for their economic development, obviously.
Obviously, we're, we're next to several other successful towns that built their, kept the landscape of what they look like, a farm community or agricultural community, but still have, you know, positive economics, even without full sewer systems such as Gelford. So I think that's another idea, to maybe look and see what some of our neighbors are doing, or even possibly talk to some of their first selectmen, town, you know, town managers, and get ideas of what their, their mapping plan is.
I also think that the blueprint, blueprint committee should be part of this too, because they're looking at what to do with the town, and they should be part of this as well as economic development.
The intention for the blueprint committee, when it was formalized, was much less about doing some type of field study and much more about the trajectory of the town and where, it's more of a master plan committee and a master plan advisory committee, which we've never really fully embraced, and it's something that we need to embrace better.
Thank you, Rory.
So Bruce, did you have anything in particular when you said it's not finished?
No, I think we still need to discuss it, because I understand Rory did an awesome job, but we're still discussing on where we want to put, what we want to do, where we want to, where we want to do it, who we want to include. And I think that we need to discuss it some more before we open.
That's fine. So we'll just keep it under unfinished business at this point in time, and Rory has the suggestions from the council as far as where to, you know, to get more input on this before it comes back to the council on there. So we'll just keep it on the agenda at this point in time.
Thank you.
Okay. New business. Discussion and action, item A, fire department engine one purchase.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as the council had voted back in April, I was directed to meet with the Fire Commission and members of their committee over the purchase of Engine One. We did that last week at their special meeting to discuss the costs associated, and I believe Deputy Chief Belangelo is here to make a presentation relative to that purchase fee this evening.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Everyone, thank you, thank you, Mayor and council members. I know back in, during the budget cycle, we talked about the rising costs of fire apparatus throughout the United States. I felt compelled to draft up a little handout to walk you through to kind of identify what's really going on in the country today with, in the fire service and replacing fire apparatus. As it comes, no surprise during COVID, post-COVID, supply chain disruptions, we could talk all day about that, as well as the workforce. And I'm sure we're not the only department in the, in the town that's actually dealing with rising costs of vehicles, equipment, and supplies. But it's certainly a significant cost increase as far as fire apparatus throughout the country. A lot of it's due to inflation, cost of labor, cost of materials. The manufacturers obviously have their, their rising costs, but it's also the components that go into a fire apparatus, the engine, the pump, the transmission, the lighting, and all the other components. These are all costs rising that are being transferred to the manufacturer and obviously to us as customers. It's a, it's a growing problem. Tariffs, concern about rising tariffs, and the big one for the engines is the EPA regulations. I know in January 1, '26, Cummins Diesel's coming out with the X-10 series, which is an extremely large increase in cost due to the EPA regulations and the new series. We kind of want to avoid that, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Some manufacturers are incorporating a floating clause due to the backlogging. We talked about before in the past about the increased delivery times, up to two to four years, and manufacturers sometimes get incurred more cost after the contract signed, and they could come in and say, hey, look, you know, this costs us X or whatever amount of money, you need to come up with a certain percentage of that or the cost of that. That's actually happened. Though someone will deny it. We have no intention of entering any kind of contract that has a clause like that. Having said that, there's nothing to say that those costs can't be front-loaded. They won't say it, they won't admit it, but you can figure it out that, hey, look, this, there's a risk here. Because of the backlogging, there's increased demand, a lot of departments are ordering apparatus ahead of time. This whole issue is decimated apparatus replacement programs and increase their budgets. The build time has increased, it's almost double that right now than it used to be. Industry consolidation is another one. We'll talk a little bit later about a Senate Subcommittee that had discussions with the REB Group, Specialty Vehicles, and Pierce Manufacturing. These larger companies are buying up a lot of the smaller companies that manufacture apparatus. This is all being looked into, and all very big concern at the federal level. We've talked about the financial burden, the cost of the apparatus. Engines right now are more than $1 million. The specification that we're going on was the previous Engine 3, which was Anthony, what was?
660 for the truck itself.
660. This truck has less options than that, the one we're, we're building now. Ladder trucks are costing $2 million, over $2 million. I asked our representative today what, how Truck 1 would cost right now if we were to take that same truck and build it today, $2.2 million.
We paid $1.6, about three years ago.
And it's a cost of the aging fleet. We're, we're, you know, Engine 1's 30 years old. It costs a cer, you know, a serious amount of money to keep that vehicle on the road. And I provided some links as well for you guys to reference if you'd like. Extended delivery times, right now, like I said before, they used to be 14 to 16 months, give or take. Now they're two to four years. Some departments, actually, we experienced it, getting chassis for ambulances. That seemed to have quelled a little bit, but still, still could be an issue. Extended delivery time of OEM parts, you know, for the repairs of the vehicles that we have now. And, you know, this poses a safety issue. You're keeping vehicles in service longer than they should be, and, you know, current, like I said, current Engine 1 is 30 years old. So about a month ago, and I provided a link, the Senate Subcommittee had a hearing with the REB Group and Pierce Manufacturing, and it really brought a lot of stuff to light. The IFF and fire chiefs across the country are pleading with the senators to deal with this issue. Unfortunately, I don't think we'll see any relief before this build, but there's been a lot of growing concern with this. Department of Justice, Federal Trade Commission's going to be involved at some point, if they already haven't. But that link right there is for about an hour and 40-minute hearing, actually really puts it to light. It's really amazing, truly amazing what, what's going on in the country today, and the burden is putting on all of fire services, not just North Ramford. Every fire service is going through this, their rising cost. I've never thought I'd ever see an apparatus, a fire engine, cost as much for just a basic simple pumper, without any, any frills in it at all. Okay, so second handout, just basically outlines a proposed proposal. Our sales rep is Michael Pinto. He's the one we've been engaged with the last two builds. Greenwood Emergency Vehicles out of North Alaburu, Massachusetts. They manufacture E1, their factories, their main headquarters is located in Ocala, Florida, but this truck would be built in Hamburg, New York. The current sale price right now is $1,085,000. The projected build time is 18 months, and I'll explain why in a second. So E1 opened up a program called the E1 Select Series. It's essentially very similar to that of a production truck. They pre-engineered a series of vehicles that all have very common features that most departments are ordering. And when Mike had emailed me the Select Series based on our operational needs, the truck was really, is essentially what we needed. It was actually very fortunate that this series, one of the versions of this series will actually meet our operational needs with some modifications. Unlike the production truck, which Truck 1 was, we have a little more options with a Select Series. You can change some lighting, change some seating, change the doors from roll-up doors to, you know, traditional doors, and so on. So it does save a little money, and it actually reduces that delivery time almost at half, if not more. As of last week, the delivery date, projected delivery time is 18 months. So on top of that, sale price, E1 had a 4.5% increase. They're holding the price till the end of the month for us, because they know we're engaged in a build. That 4.5% increase equates to $48,825, which I certainly want over our payment option right now, working with Anthony. Truck 1's lease payment will be done by July 1, 2028. So we start payment July 1, 2028. Principal payments only would be $217,000. That's just a principal payment. What's the current interest rate at Truck 1? 4.33.
4.33.
4.33. So a principal payment only, the five-year lease payment, July 1, 2028, 29, 30, 31, 32. And again, that's just a principal payment, not the 4-point or whatever. Hopefully, it'll be less by then, but, so, basically what we're looking to do right now, and, and I, I appreciate as a taxpayer, the cost of this truck is far more than what was discussed earlier. What we want to do is replace a 30-year-old apparatus. I want to engage in a contract to avert that $48,000, $49,000 increase. I think we could save us a lot of money if we could get to a contract, get in a production line, and give us more options, looking at a different motor. This spec, this price includes the X-10, which is the newest model, series, Cummins, that's coming out for July, January 1. We have the possibility going into what's called an L9, which is what's in the current Engine 3, which has enough power to power that vehicle safely. And we could save upwards of $50,000, again, that kind of motor. So we're looking for a max spending cap, again, keeping in mind, we would have to replace some of this equipment. We're not going to put old tire chains on a new vehicle, we're not going to put old hand lights on a new vehicle, you know, we're going to need to replace some of the equipment. Stuff's got to be mounted, stuff's got to be wired, and I'd say I'd like that contingency as well. We don't want to have to come back here.
As much as we like you, we don't want you to come back for that reason either.
So our vehicle is 30 years old, and from, I spoke with Chief Lennon, and he had, I had asked him, you know, what is typically the replacement cycle for vehicles of this nature, and it's 15 to 21 years. So we've gotten our full, you know, use and more out of Engine 1, which happens to be our highest rolled vehicle, or apparatus, I should say, in our whole fleet. And as you can very well see, two weeks ago, the need for proper apparatus when you have, you know, sizable structured fires, which can happen in any municipality. This does come off, or happened to come into existence in a time period when we're going to be done with the payment for Truck 1, correct? What's the current payment for Truck 1? 220, 145. Okay, so it's, it's slightly above this, but then, again, when you have, figure in interest, right of that same amount. I mean, this is a, a cost of the municipality that you can't avert. You need apparatus, you need to be saved, and particularly when you have a volunteer fire department that you want to, you know, maintain, you want to make sure that the proper equipment is in place. I support this. It's something that we're going to have to do and continue to do. Trucks get old, and they break down.
And Engine 1 will be 32 years old by the time this new one goes in service.
I'm sorry?
Engine 1 will end up being 32 years, frontline piece, and then we'll downgrade it to a spare.
And then, we downgrade this to a spare, and we sell the old engine, what's it called now, 33?
It's Engine 5.
I was saying, Engine 5. So the old Engine 3, which is now Engine 5, which is held as a secondary apparatus in case something goes down. That will no longer cease to exist, we'll sell that to an outside apartment or some other use, maybe getting, what do we think, maybe 10 grand, 20?
We broker it out, yeah.
Broker it out, okay.
Yeah, what's the website we use to sell Truck 1 in the medic unit?
With Garage, withgarage.com. Counselor just brought up a good point. The, the last payment on Truck 1 is in '27, '28, so depending on how the, if it's an 18, true 18-month build, you may have an overlap on that '27, '28 year. If they get to push it out, then it will start until I 1, '28. But there might be a potential, depending on how the 18-month plays out.
So when we enter into this contract, so there's no down payment required?
No payment until delivery.
Okay. And if for some reason, there's some financial difficulty for the town, and we have not taken the truck yet on there, can we cancel the order, and is there any penalty?
I could ask.
For that?
I asked that question, and the answer that I received was, we can't, as long as we don't take delivery, that truck can be reabsorbed by U1 and sold to another municipality.
I don't think you'd want that in writing.
Yeah, obviously we want that in writing, but that's the answer that I...
The intent, if we do get a contract, the command staff will look at that contract in great detail, and I would be inclined to do a Zoom meeting with Mike, with all of us in the room, including the commissioners, just if there's any questions that we're all asking, there's full transparency on it.
Of course.
Because this is a big dollar item, and I think everyone's got to get eyes on it.
Of course.
The committee has been doing a great job, looking at the shop order in great detail. They've been very, very much engaged, so. There's a lot of moving parts with building a fire truck. There's just a lot involved, a lot of detail, a lot of options, a lot of moving parts.
What kind of a contingency would you want for the equipment?
Probably upwards in the 20s, Tamauln hand wire. And I believe Mike put that in, he built that into the price, but we're going to get a final contract and proposal from him. But the, you know, again, I, I don't want to get into that 48 change increase at the end of the month. They held that price for us.
These increases are...
It's insane.
They're, they're insane, but they're on track with what has been told to us, and we've seen it happen in real time. The increases that we, when we looked at Truck 1, we were seeing those increases, and we had mentioned possibly looking at an engine versus Truck 1, having a ladder.
One thing I will say too, is if we can avoid that fee, that's almost the same exact amount as the, the tax on it, or the finance charges, I apologize, the finance charges.
Correct.
4.3 versus 4.5.
Yeah.
So they, they kind of wash each other.
Good point.
So you said you were in front of us a few months ago, correct? Didn't we agree to this? Am I missing something?
There was never a firm dollar amount. We, we put some number, like 950 to a million.
But I thought that we made an agreement that we're going to do something and lock into this and get it done.
We did, but we had it under that amount. We had it about 800, 850. That's where we thought it was going to be.
We, yes, the, the motion was that we authorized the town manager to have discussions along with the Fire Commission to arrange the financing. There was no dollar amount in it, because during the budget season, the cost that was given to us was approximately $900,000, but I believe that was a demo truck that they were looking at at the time.
There was a bunch of different options coming across.
Correct. And that, so that was a, a number that was given to us, but it wasn't in concrete, because they still had to go through this whole process of exactly what they wanted. So tonight, they've done all that work now since April to now.
A lot of work.
And, and they came back with a price, so we just have to vote.
Very time-consuming to make you guys wait like that, just as my point. I thought I was seeing in the future or something like that, that we're sitting here and we're agreeing to this, because I'm, I'm in agreement with it anyways, because you guys need your equipment. But it's just, the whole point is, I, I swear, I thought we were locked into something already, and then when this came about tonight, I'm sitting here writing things down, but, okay.
It wasn't a discussion, but it was in the, the April 22 meeting. It was among the list of the, all the budget motions. It was among the list of all the budget motions that would be made.
But I thought, I swear, we said if we don't lock this thing down now, we're going to, the price is going to go up, and then we said, let's do it. But you said it was a demo?
Well, that was one of the options that they gave us, but they didn't have an exact price because they had not gone through this process yet.
And the select series just came out probably a month, month and a half ago?
Yeah. So this is the first time that they're coming back because they now have an exact price on it.
And this is just for the engine?
Yep.
And then you said the wiring and all that?
Well, the price, we're going to include that because I think we're going to save a lot of money getting into that L9. But I don't guarantee getting into that until we get a contract.
I'm just asking.
That's certainly the goal.
I'm just curious.
And I don't want to be a guinea pig for a new series motor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Speaking of costs, so how much more, I know it's more, if you went with another manufacturer like Pierce or like?
Pierce?
Pierce is way more expensive.
How much are we saving by going with?
They're all, all the single, all the good sole source manufacturers are about, they're about the same. We've been engaged with E1 the last two builds. We've been engaged with this project. He's using Sourcewell.
Going with E1 also creates consistency across companies, right?
Because Pierce usually works better, right?
Much more, usually. Typically, typically. It's cycles.
If you had to guess, would that?
It'd be up there. I think then, Seagrave. You know, if we were to go out to bid, that's going to set us back another probably 60 days. And then now, now there's more increases. And then we may have lost that chance of getting into that L9 because I think a lot of departments.
I'm going to jump on that.
Versus the cost of a, the X-10.
Yeah, it's difficult sometimes to get into a new engine and not know what it's going to perform like. You never want to get into a first iteration.
So do we have a suggested motion? Because I don't see anything here or anything in our packet.
I don't, I support this, but how do you make a motion when we don't know what the final dollar figure is?
Looking for a spending cap, spending ceiling or whatever, maximum amount.
Do not exceed $1,085,000.
Right, that was.
That was what the commission liked.
You think that's the number you're looking for?
Yeah, it's not a safe number, I guess is what we want. Because we don't want to come up slightly short and then miss out on it, and then it really, you know. Just want to make sure we have a safe number.
So 185?
Ladders, it's called hard suction, the lighting, the graphics, the paint, just some tool boards and shelving in there. There's a few things we have to make sure we get in there, like on-spot chains, new hand lights, just some loose equipment, the radios. Radios will move over. That's just a matter of uninstalling or reinstalling.
So is it 185 plus the 20 contingency, or are the contingencies in the one?
It's in there.
Or we could go, we could go with Anthony's general procedure and just round it off and put 1.1 million. Not to exceed 1.1, and that gives them a little bit of, a little bit of.
What happens if we say $1,085,000?
That was our suggestion, but we didn't want to show shock yet.
There's ripping the Band-Aid off, and there's ripping the Band-Aid off.
If the figures here say $1,085,000, why don't we just?
Because there's other things that he's just talked about that are not.
Yeah, but what I'm confused, because what I'm hearing is, I hear the question, is this include the contingency? And I heard, I'm pretty sure you said, yes, it includes.
Mike built in 20.
So why?
And we added 10.
I know, so why would we add more? That we have to be responsible here. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is, when we make a motion, I mean, we should be, can we include in the motion that we remove the trucks they're replacing? Because we have to remember that every time we have additional equipment, there's a cost associated with that. And there's no need for spare trucks.
Engine 5 is our current spare, so that, it's a 1990, that will be sold. And then Engine 1 will be the new engine.
Sold too, right?
Newer than Engine 5.
Whenever we.
You've got to have one spare.
Why? We never used to.
We've had one for quite a while.
Why? Because when we replaced.
If a vehicle goes out of service.
We didn't, we didn't retire it. And I remember not too long ago on the council, we had quite a lengthy discussions about retiring equipment. I mean, we have a new engine in Company 3, we'll have a new engine in Company 1. And we have, if we're confident, if we are confident that we're, we are, we have the right assets and the right houses, then why do we need spares? We also have mutual aid, don't we?
We do, but I don't want to rely on mutual aid if we have an engine going out for routine repairs or unforeseen repairs, DOT inspections, hose and ladder testing, pump testing. We send our vehicles out.
Engine 3's been out for about a week, and Engine 5's been running frontline.
That engine runs a lot.
Anthony, just to put things in perspective so that we have a better understanding of what Tommy's talking about, what are the annual costs to maintain?
I can get it, I don't have it off the top of my head. I can get what it costs to maintain all of the apparatus.
Yeah, I'm not trying to.
No, I understand, valid questions. These are valid, these are valid questions.
But I'm just, we have to be responsible to the taxpayer.
Absolutely.
You know, because we're all taxpayers, right? So we have to be responsible to everybody.
And it's also used for training.
You know.
You know, so there's a lot of uses for it. The truck does get used.
We have to be conscious of this. Because, you know, every time we do something, we're adding costs, we're adding costs. You may say, well, it's only a little cost, but add them all up, it becomes a lot of money.
Where's the spare engine housed?
All over. It's usually at Company 3, Station 3, but it's been at Station 2, depending on what we're doing with it.
But it's in a garage, it's not.
Oh, yeah, no, no. This truck is not left outside collecting dust. This truck does get checked, it gets used, whether it's in training.
Just to lower our ISO rating, we have to have at least one spare. That brings our ISO rating down.
Which is what?
It's. Yeah, it's for insurance or commercial insurance.
They come in.
We don't have a spare apparatus.
Right, because I think, I think the last time, Anthony, you brought that up, which was when we were talking about retired equipment. That didn't move the needle.
We haven't had insurance, we haven't had that since 2014.
But I remember we had the report, we had the old report, the new report, and it didn't move the needle. Just so you know. Because that did, that did come up at that point. And I remember requesting that, that, an old, what's it, ISO?
Yep.
And a new ISO, and the needle didn't move. So just to be, just to be realistic, I'm just saying that to be realistic.
Well, I mean, that's what we were all, the last ISO report, we had to come up with all our training records.
No, 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 you have to have, no, no, you're right, you're right. And you have to have all of that. But having a spare truck versus not a spare truck, it didn't, it didn't move the needle.
I think operationally, it has way more value than the ISO rating, to be perfectly honest with you.
Maybe so.
You know, with training, and then a vehicle goes out of maintenance.
I just want to be careful.
I agree.
Cost-wise, and, you know, the burden on the tax. That's all, that's the only reason why I bring it up.
So can we do this?
The only thing, I mean, to be honest with you, Engine 5, in the last probably five or six months, has got more time in service than on service. Because it's been covering Engine 1 for, what, four months? Out of the four months, Engine 1 was out probably, what, two of them? Engine 3, Engine 3's been out now for, actually, Engine 5's running as Engine 3 right now. So I mean, to have one, I mean, I think it's, you know.
So I've been going, Engine 3's getting, Engine 3's getting a new ECM.
I'm just bringing it up for our discussion. I'm not, I love our fire departments like everyone else, but I'm just bringing it up from a cost standpoint, that's all.
So in the motion, we could have that Engine 5 is the replace, is.
The current Engine 5, yep.
Be is sold. And Engine 1?
1 will become Engine 5.
That's what your spare is called, Engine 5?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, can we do, if we do a round number of 1.1, that we request in the motion that they actually come back to us and say, this is the exact amount that we spent. So if they didn't spend 1.1, and they only spent 185, but we gave them the extra, they have to come back to us and tell us.
These guys are going to spend.
I think that's going to happen another time.
But the other factor that isn't taken into this right now is, he said he's negotiating about the engine, if he can get the existing one versus the new one coming out in January, which is about $50,000 difference.
About $50,000.
Off of this 185, right? This 10, 1.85 figure. So there is potential for more savings in, in the figure. We can stay with the 1.085, I'm fine with that on that. And knowing that they still have the potential of saving some money off of that 1.085.
What should be preferable?
Round up. We're going to come back.
Chances are good you'll be able to get that engine now?
Very good. And there's no guarantees till I talk to him and be engaged and accomplished.
You have to make that notification when?
I'm going to call him tonight and hopefully get something started tomorrow. I don't want that, I want to avert that fee, and I want to get into an L9.
All right, guys.
Make the motion.
But I also need contingency and some loose equipment and some mounting and wiring.
I think.
We're going to move a lot of this dollar item.
This was presented at 1.85. I'm all for this apparatus being brought, and you guys moving forward with securing it. I would also, I'm also all for trying to get the existing motor versus the new generation due to what you said. You don't want to be a guinea pig for the new one, which will not only save us more money, but also give us a time-tested, proven, you know, engine that is already working within our town. But I think at this point in time, let's keep with the number that you presented, 1.85.
Yeah, 1.085.
Sorry, 1.085, very important. Very important. You see, he got excited. We're going to get another tower truck. Now, so keep it 1.1085, I should say. And then if something were to happen and you needed to come to us for more with an explanation as to why, it's important that this board hears that. Okay? But we are all for you going at and finding this and trying to find those cuts where you can. We're all taxpayers, we all have the same goal here. We want to get the best apparatus, but also save money where the town can. So we support you in doing so. So I'll make the motion that we allow the fire commission to move forward with conversations with E1 of Hamburg, New York, at a sum of $1,085,000, not to exceed, for the projected 18-month build and delivery time for a new E1 engine, which would be called Engine 1, and the sale of the current Engine 5, formerly known as Engine 3.
You may want to note that's for the lease of that piece of apparatus. The contract should be in such form as approved by the town attorney's office.
Okay, amended as stipulated by town attorney.
Second.
Got all that, Kathleen?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Go to the table.
Thank you.
Do you want to do a roll call vote?
No.
Just everybody?
Yeah. Okay, so the motion, the motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Counselor Miller, or Felicia, sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is funding from Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program, LOCP, for Seahill Road Rehab Project.
We'd come before you a few months ago when we applied for this funding. Just wait a minute.
We will let the fire, fire commission and volunteers. Okay, Chris, thank you.
So this is a program, LOTCIP is the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Projects. Currently, we have, Twin Lakes is moving along with that project. We had a meeting this morning with that. So Seahill Road, we just got authorization to proceed. This is what this is for the $4.1 million, is what the state would be funding for the reconstruction of Seahill from Route 80 to Poms Lane and the Poms Lane intersection, to make sure that we can square that up so it's not so complicated with the island in the middle and what have you. We will have to, again, come up with the funding for the design of this. I think the last time was somewhere in the $150,000 range. So down the road, before we are able to move forward with this project, we'll have to fund the final design of that. We'll come before you in the future for that. But this is so that we can sign the agreement with the DOT and move forward with the project. And again, it's for the $4.1 million coming to the town.
What's the projected timeline on this?
Yep, so this one, so we're looking for Twin Lakes to be constructed next summer. And then this would follow the following summer, so we'll have.
Summer of '27, we're talking?
Yeah, summer of '27, right. That's the anticipated timeframe, so that we'll go through the design while we're doing the construction of Twin Lakes.
Excuse me, Mr. Potter, excuse me. Can we stop the sidebar conversations right now? It's very disruptive up here, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we were just making some headway with the chronostrips.
Yeah.
Also Transportation Project.
We appreciate your work.
Come here and take a seat.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so this project is projected for summer of '27 on here. And so the engineering costs would be, we would have that like next year, you would know what that might be?
Yeah, so we would, probably through the winter, we would come up with a proposal and get some requests for proposals in. And then so that we're prepared for design over the next, for, over the '26, '27 calendar year. And then construction in '27.
Okay.
Does that include all the sewers and everything?
No, there is a, there is a portion of pipes that we're going to be replacing, that we need to replace. And we will be doing some realigning up by Poms Lane. I know there's some, it's getting directed through neighborhoods and what have you. So we are going to take that water out of going down Poms Lane and then through the neighborhoods. So that will stay out on Seahill.
And this includes that triangle-shaped intersection?
Yep, yep, at Poms Lane where that comes into Seahill, that will be just one entrance, it won't be split anymore.
That's a silly question, I know, but do you have any authority to make the guy on the corner cut down those pine trees? Because you cannot see traffic coming up Seahill from there.
We can work with the traffic authority to get out there and make sure that there is appropriate sightlines.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so do we need to approve anything, or this is just, this was just informational information?
We have to accept it, don't we?
Accept it and allow the town manager to sign, execute it, and send it back to the state.
Because there's no motion here. I don't see a motion.
No, I think it was just something simple, so.
Okay. All right. So do I hear a motion to accept the LOCP? I don't even know, let me see if there's a project number on here.
There is, L980002, state project number, on the first page of the letter.
L980002?
There it is.
L098.
098 dash 002.
Yeah, state project number L098 dash 0002.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to accept this project and authorize the town manager to sign all the documents?
I'll do that. So I, for project L dash 09 dash. So I, for project L dash 09 dash, 098 dash 0082, we authorize, the council authorizes, no?
No.
It's three zeros and a two.
Oh, sorry. So the council authorizes project number L-098 dash 002.
02.
Is your computer not working?
No.
Might be eyes.
Well, your computer's not open.
It's L-098 dash 0002.
Perfect.
Am I missing something?
No.
So we authorize the town manager to approve the project?
No.
No.
We also authorize some reading glasses?
There's no motion, I'm reading.
Perhaps a motion authorizing regarding state project number L-098 dash 0002, that the town approves such project and authorize the town manager to enter into any agreements and other documents as required by the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation in connection with the town's acceptance of the LOCP funds for this project.
Thank you, as stipulated by Town Attorney Brian.
I think, I thought that's what you said, that's why.
That's what I said. Thank you.
Not even close. Good effort, Chris.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Abelson, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Next item, this might be you also, Brook Lane paving agreement with Regional Water Authority.
So as you know, Brook Lane, the Regional Water Authority put in a water transmission main from Totucket up to the UI easement, and doing so, they have a trench now that's in the road. In this past capital improvement project, we set aside money to redo the street, so this money, in conjunction with the money that we set aside, will help us have a better, more complete project out there, be able to go curb to curb, do the drainage replacements that we normally do, and take care of the whole road with the offset of the regional water money. And based upon the width of the trench and the repairs to the trench, we agree with the estimated $108,920 that they will be giving to the town, and then we'll take responsibility for the trench and then repairing the road.
Okay, so there, there is a suggested motion? Okay.
Make a motion, now therefore be hereby resolved that the town council approves of the proposed paving agreement for Brook Lane from Totucket Road to the United Illuminating Easement at approximately 14 Brook Lane between the town and the RWA. The RWA shall enter into the paving agreement with Exhibit A, and that the town manager be hereby authorized to enter into said addendum on behalf of the town, subject to approval of the agreement by the town attorney. Said agreement shall be executed by both parties and filed with the town clerk.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Palladino, seconded by Counselor Miller. Discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Okay. Next item is Munis Time and Attendance Advanced Scheduling Module for Police Department.
Madam Mayor, if I could, I'll bring up the assistant town manager and/or the police chief if they'd like to discuss this, this item.
You're passing this off, Chief? Okay?
Smart man.
Yeah, so it started with, the police department is looking at a way to bid shifts and trying to find a software solution that will allow them to do that. So they were looking at a product called VCS, which a lot of other departments use. The pricing was good, it was based on them doing the billing for the private duty jobs and kind of taking a cut of that, more or less, and that's why they were able to give such competitive pricing. But there were some concerns with that. Currently, a union employee does the private duty billing, so there's a potential issue there. And then VCS is not a Munis product, stuff can be exported and imported, but we were concerned that it would also require essentially, like, two separate payrolls being tracked. And so we communicated with Munis, asked them if they had a solution, and they do. It is the Advanced Scheduling Module, which would satisfy what the police department needs. The chief and the president of the police union, you know, both sat in on a webinar going over the module with Munis. It also requires that we implement the Time and Attendance Module in order to do that. You know, in addition to the police department benefits, there would be benefits for the rest of the town as well. Currently, when, when time off request is submitted by an employee, you know, it goes to supervisor and then eventually the manager to approve, and it is connected to nothing. So unless you manually track all the individual requests, it's, it's difficult to, you know, ensure that an office has coverage. And so essentially people are keeping separate calendars in order to do that. So the Time and Attendance Module would solve that. It would automate certain things, for example, the payroll clerk administrators are salaried, they're paid for 35 hours regardless, but they enter the total hours worked. So she has to manually go each week during the payroll and reset their timesheets to 35 hours to ensure that they're paid. So it would automate and streamline a lot of things within payroll. And then additionally, the, the Advanced Scheduling Module could have other uses outside of the police department. For example, rec and library, where the part-timers often swap shifts if somebody's unable to make it, they might be able to use it as well in order to have their employees be able to do that, you know, automatically.
Okay, so, so the cost in here, one is for the annual cost of the module, and then there's the implementation fee. Do we need to allot any money for training? Let's just, you know, let's just get the, out there, and because there's no point in implementing all of this stuff if we don't have the money to train the people to use them, to use it. And I know we have a certain amount of hours that, in the budget for contracting with Munis for other, you know, anything in Munis for training, but this is a whole new module on here. And I'm concerned that, you know, the motion is to, not to exceed a certain dollar amount, but it's just covering the modules and the implementation fee.
Yeah, but within implementation, typically services like this will also have a training module that's part of it, so that when they're installing this new, in the software, that they have some element of teaching you how to use it. That's not in this proposal?
As I understand it, it's basically, the implementation fee is based on a fixed number of hours. And so, you know, if, if you're able to implement it faster than that, there's built-in hours that could be used for training. It, it's something we've got some clarification on.
I think it might be prudent to go back to Munis and tell them that we want that stipulated in the contract. I mean, any software company that's selling software should stipulate X amount of time, this is what we need for implementation, and then this is what we need for onboarding. It's part of implementation.
I have one big question, and I just, cause I'm feeling something here. Chief, is this what you guys want? What do you guys want?
Yeah, so we looked at, this is about, about two years, we looked at a lot of, a lot of different vendors. This, this system seems to fit best when you're working with different unions and different products. And having the Munis system, them streamline things to one vendor makes sense. And that's why when we were going through the process, we invited the unions in that were involved, so they can ask their questions and whatnot. So right now, we're the only department in town, I believe, that still does everything on paper. And that's one of the reasons, so, but yeah, this is, this is the system that we believe we can work with and go through. That implementation fee does cover training with it. Obviously, if you extend past that, we need more training, then that would be something we have to look at, but from the user end, the end user, for the, you know, the, the employees that are just gonna be basically clocking, clocking themselves in and out, depending on how they do it, there's not much to that, it's just a point and click. The implementation covers the different pay rates, depending if it's extra duty or department overtime, it's just clicking the right one, and then they still have the checks and balances that come to us, so. Like, if it's a Friday night now and somebody calls up and they need emergency personal day for whatever reason, and they call the lieutenant, well, the lieutenant's gotta call the sergeant on duty to say, because our schedule changes all the time, you know, who's working, how many do I have on, we have our minimums, and make sure we have our staffing there. So there's many instances of that, we just need to get, I wouldn't even say it's 21st century, but 20th century scheduling.
It makes it a little bit easier because, you know, right now, I could look, who's working tonight? We wanna know, we have to make a phone call. Well, this, you look on the phone, you see who's staff, who's the supervisor, and you could actually punch in and take, you know, say that you need this day off on the phone. Normally, you have to go fill out paperwork, and the paperwork goes from one person to another person, another person, and it just gets confusing.
Then you make copies so everybody has knowledge. It goes on and on.
This followed up from an MPP that was, complained three years ago, that was discussed that this was supposed to be resolved already, but then I talked to Mike, and Mike said he was gonna get it done, and it just took more long, you know, a lot longer than it did, because right now, I told him, I said, you know, based on what's going on right now, there could be a potential Department of Labor violation because the hours are not being counted properly. You know, people are working more than, more hours than others and not being equally distributed what you're supposed to be.
Who, who would spearhead this?
The implementation, well, it's gonna be, we're gonna have finance as part of it, right? Cause they have a role as far as it's gonna go into our payroll system. We have the IT manager that was, was hired a couple of years ago, he's gonna be our head at the PD for implementation on that side. Obviously admin, so it's, it's a group, it's just not one.
So he's not, he's not union, correct?
He's non-union.
So he would be a good person to run this?
Yeah, I mean, day-to-day is, for us, is gonna go through him, yeah.
And he's, he's good with IT stuff, so that's obviously, cause anytime any of us I think here in Munis, it's like, oh god.
Well, we have, we don't have a good track record as far as training and everything else, so I, you know, I'm leery, it's very much needed, but I wanna make sure that we are giving them all of the tools that they need and the resources to implement it correctly.
So is this just for the police department? Cause I, I got confused what Rory was talking about.
We're, we're a bulk of it. The town already uses some programs, which we're gonna have to get to speak to, cause we don't use them yet, but it enhances their platform. So, and that comes along, we need, we need those services anyway with our package, but they get the added benefit if I'm saying correctly.
It could be used Public Works is another one. As Rory mentioned about, there's always people with days off, and unless Fran or Gary can get a separate calendar, you can never tell who's on today, who's off today, who's on a vacation day.
Yeah, no, no, I'm good with that, I just want, I just was confused what Rory was talking about, cause, you know, so this, so this is-
It becomes a town-wide module, not just a police department module.
Right, that, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
But why would we not require all of the departments to use the module to track the days off, the personal days, vacations, and all of that stuff, like, like?
How's everybody else?
There's a product called, there's Employee Self-Serve, that the employees use now to take vacation days online and stuff. Part of this is that this product supersedes that. So we would all migrate from Employee Self-Serve, I forget the buzzword name they call it, but there's, there's some similar product, so you're right, that the entire population would be running through this new-
Yeah, I, I mean-
This is two separate modules, so the time and attendance one would be, you know, everybody would be using that. And then the advanced scheduling, again, there are some applications that other departments may be able to use it for, but it's predominantly for the police department.
So two questions. Is the Board of Education using this module? One, cause I don't know, did you look into it? And two, what's the implementation time? How long does it take to put it through?
Well, that's two facets then, so it's one on if the board approves it, right? Cause that, the implementation time goes out, but you're talking three to four months up to your, your own intent, so it doesn't-
Because obviously, the Board of Education hasn't been, I know they use Munis, and they have separate modules, do they have?
I talked to, and you can answer, but I talked to the superintendent, we, we're more of a scheduling platform, cause they're, they know what they're, they're-
They're more of a salary.
So that piece, so with, when you buy, and I understand where you're going with it, cause-
If they already have a module, why can't we?
Yeah, for us, we need the scheduling part, but to have the scheduling part, you have to have the time and attendance part to go along with it.
So they don't have that?
So, not to my knowledge, but unless-
I mean, Anthony, I'm trying to remember, do they go live with payroll?
No.
So, we don't know, because they're not using Munis for payroll.
They still aren't? I thought they were-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we don't know?
No, meaning-
So could they have this and not be using it yet?
No.
Is it possible?
No, cause we, we, you know, the, the Munis purchase was done as the town, correct, Anthony?
Yeah, so there was two separate, there was, ideally it would have been one database, and we decided to go with two separate situations that still, that is, they don't talk, that's a different story, but unbelievable. So the point is that, is the board a bit using this module? I don't know, to be honest with you.
Well, do they have the, well, the answer is if they have the module, and if they do have the module, just shift it over to the police department, so it doesn't cost us any money, that's one.
Well, there's two modules, right? There's time and attendance.
And the advanced-
Well, they would have to have both, or at least one of them.
Yeah, well, and if, if they're not live with payroll, you know, was not part of the initial purchase on the town side? And if they're not live with payroll, you know, they wouldn't have added it since then.
Well, we don't know.
So my other question, Jim, is when you guys sat in, I guess Craig, you sat in on, on the presentation, did they, were you, did you have any hands-on, like to see how, you know, what it's like to do their scheduling, to see if it's workable or manageable?
The thing that they presented is, is similar to all other departments, so that's, we're asking all the same questions, making sure that we could put in our CBA language and work with, and the chief asked a lot of other questions that I missed, so basically, everything's in there that we need.
Yeah, we didn't run a demo by any means, but we went through and as they opened up their product and they, as, as all vendors do, and we, we made them do certain things to see if it was compatible for what our needs were.
Do you know if any other police departments in the state are using Munis, using this, this product?
I, so the Munis platform, not that I'm aware of. The other platforms that we originally looked to, we went there first because other departments were using them, and one of them was, I don't think we need to mention the name, but a couple of the towns around us, they're actually moving away for it because they are Munis towns, and they're looking for different solutions because it didn't integrate well with their Munis platform. And that kinda ended our road with that, because then we're just-
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if, if, cause if you do get it, you have somewhere else to go-
Nationally, yes, but I, I don't, yeah.
Networking, to network with some people, you know?
Yeah, no, absolutely, so. There's, there's gonna be hurdles, I mean, you're, you're talking, there's a lot of different things that go into it.
What would be in the five-year plan, probably?
I'm already on two, so we're gonna close.
Okay.
Not to be repetitive, but Rory, does the town hall have 100% handle on Munis now?
On Munis as a whole?
As a whole. Cause like, Ron had said, every time you hear Munis, you kinda get nervous. So do we have a total handle on it now in the town hall?
I wouldn't say 100%. Yeah, total handle. The thing about Munis is, you know, it's used by counties, you know, that serve a million people, that have staff of thousands. And so the amount that you can do with Munis, some of it, you know, we, we looked, for example, at the recruitment module, that was part of the original purchase package, and we determined with the amount of recruitment we do, it wasn't worth it. So, you know, we discontinued it and we're no longer being charged for it. All that to say, it's enormous. I would not say we have a handle on the whole thing, I would say we're doing a lot better than we were several months ago.
A lot better, I mean, especially the council agreeing to the additional training modules that we got, and we've taken advantage of those, we've made enormous light-years advances from where we were.
Okay, so are you confident on the implementation, having enough resources to- Okay, so are you confident on the implementation, having enough resources to implement it in a timely manner for you?
I'm confident with the number that we have presently for that quote, to implement the, the project, yeah.
So as it stated in, you know, the, in our packet here, this $35,000 is, was not budgeted because they were still researching everything, but the proposal is, is to fund this through the police extra duty fund, correct? Which is the fund, the last balance that you gave us was approximately $300,000, right? So there, there is enough money.
Definitely.
In the account to, to fund this purchase. And then after this initial, it will be worked into the budget, the annual cost of the modules. Is that correct?
Can I ask a question? So as our municipality is continuing to increase our spend with this entity, have we looked at possible economies of scale and efficiencies that they may bring to us? We're, we're spending a lot of money there. Have we, have they offered us any economies of scale?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
They've given us discounts because we're spending more money with them.
Yeah, there's, and on the memo, on your page 56, you'll notice that.
Relative to this, yes.
Dennis did, uh, 15% discount.
15% discount?
Yeah.
Okay. Annual cost of modules, $2,000.
Dennis has a good report with them.
Good. There's a $24,000 implementation fee.
Okay, so in the motion, do we have to state where this money's coming from?
Yeah.
It's in the motion.
No, there's.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it does. I'm sorry.
I'll read it if you want.
Okay, yeah, we can make the motion.
That the town council in North Bradford authorize the expenditure of amount not to exceed $35,000 from the police extra duty fund to purchase and implement Munis time and attendance in advanced scheduling.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilor Politia, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Motion carries. You can start your implementation. The clock is ticking. Three to four months. So the next item is award of bid number 26120 FFNE Public Works Edition Project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For this one, I would bring up our Public Works Director.
We did, uh, so we did a bid for our furniture for the new office. So with that, they also gave us a locker price. I don't know if you can see it on there, the lockers were.
Yeah.
$24,000.
Mm-hmm.
So, put Danny to work, and we got three quotes for ourselves, by ourselves, so we're not, that's not part of the, the bid for the furniture. We took it out, and we did it.
Separately.
Separately.
So it's not part of the Mungar contract?
No, that was, no, we did a transfer to, from last year. So the, the, the bid for the furniture is not including the $24,000.
So, so what we're proposing is, yeah, A, there, approve 46140 to United Furniture, and B, the purchase of lockers from Salisbury Industries at $13,796. I was purchasing it ourselves to save money there. As a whole, $59,936. From that $60,000 we transferred over in August from last year's operating.
Okay.
We have all the spreadsheets and everything in there, too, if there's any questions.
And we do have three quotes on the lockers, too.
Yeah.
And the lockers are bigger lockers than what the actual, the furniture company's given us.
Is it 20 lockers or no?
I would say we're doing 24.
I see 20 on there. Really, my, my.
Bruce wants a locker.
Oh, sorry. It is 20. The women's room, we're bringing our old lockers over.
To the women?
Yes.
That don't seem right. These new ones don't fit in the women's locker room, and, yeah.
That's what we're doing for now.
So 20 is adequate?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so. The motion here.
Pass all this?
Well, I don't see a specific motion.
No, there's, there wasn't a motion included with this one.
All right, wordsmith the motion, and we'll make it. Go ahead.
What's the number for the bid, the bid, the furniture one you want?
Yeah. Make a motion to award bid number 26120 for FFNE Public Works Additional.
Well, but we have to name who it's going to and the amount, which is.
A and B on the memo there.
Right.
Yep.
Do you see that, Marie?
So the motion to award bid number 26120 FFNE at the Department of Public Works, number one, to United Furniture for the reduced amount of $46,140 for furniture, denying the $24,748 proposed bid alternate for lockers, and to award the bid for the purchase of lockers from Salisbury Industries at a cost of $13,796.39.
So I, that's the motion I just made.
Okay.
Motion is stipulated by town attorney.
Yes. Okay, is there a second? Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Councilor Palladino. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Bruce and Roger.
He can have one that the women are going to get, because it doesn't.
You're going to re-murbishing them with stickers?
For the women?
Yeah.
Keep ignoring it.
They know it was normal. Are you re-murbishing the ones that you're going to put in the women's locker?
No, discussion's over.
Of course. Okay.
They're going to paint them.
Whatever, pink.
Why pink?
What if they want teal?
Kind of appropriation is that.
Okay. Agreement with Taxer Capital Services LLC is, this, this isn't the one for Lisa Valenti.
No.
This is something else.
This is something else.
Okay.
Taxer. Taxer is, is what our tax office has used.
Collection agency.
Their collections for, and some other non-tax revenue stuff that they do, but this is a proposed extension of our current service agreement that we have with Taxer. We have options for three additional one-year extensions. This would be the first of those if we do this. Our current three-year agreement expires October 25th of '25, so this would extend us to October 25th of '26.
We're happy with their service?
Yes, they're, it's recommended.
The North Bradford Town Council authorizes town manager Michael P. Downs to sign a one-year renewal with Taxer Capital Services LLC, extending our current contract to October 25th, 2026.
Second.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Discussion?
You did a second. I'm sorry, you did a second.
Yes.
How long have we been using them for?
Uh, this contract was, entered into three years ago. I don't know if we were using them before that.
We were using them before that.
Yeah, I think so.
I'd say probably close to five years.
Was it something that went out to bid three years ago?
Yeah, it was close. Don't even.
It would have had to, I would think.
I don't remember, to tell you the truth.
I just want to make sure we're not getting comfortable with people.
The, the, you have a contract with them now, and this is a built-in extension of the contract. Right, right. The, the fee is, is the statutory rate of 15%?
It's not something we have to act on.
Correct, that's correct. You could go out to bid if you don't accept the extension.
I just, I just want to make sure that we're, we're shopping around for stuff, too.
Well, I don't think we have time at this point in time, because today's the 21st, and this expires on the 25th, so we don't have time to go out to bid, and it's only a one-year extension.
That's a problem in itself, isn't it?
Well, no, because it's built into the contract that we have a one-year extension, so we can, we can do this, but in the meantime, you know, we, during this next year, we can go out to bid and see once if there is something that's cheaper. It would allow us, give us that room to do that. So. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is appropriation transfers.
Uh, three small ones on the town manager's department, covering some additional advertising for some job postings. It was a late bill for the manager's proposed budget that came in late. Public Works, they had a situation where they, new employees are allowed to get their CDL and then get reimbursed at the end for the time, and this one, the reimbursement went through, pushed their development count over. And the sewer, just the amount of the final bills came in for electricity, so three small, and this will be the end for '24, '25.
Do I have a motion? Do we hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion was made by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Palladino.
Who?
Or Goad, I, I can't hear here. I don't know where it's coming from.
It's on the same.
Okay, Councilor Goad. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So while we're on appropriation transfers, last month, there was an appropriation transfer that I asked about, and I haven't heard a response back, and it was for workman's comp, was credited $110,650, and it went to retirement contributions for $107,910. And I had asked on that, what that retirement contribution exactly was for. Was it because we underbudgeted? How did we owe so much money into retirement contributions?
I will get an answer for that, I'm sorry. It was on last month's agenda, you said?
It was, and it, in the minutes, it's on page 24. That's where the transaction showed up.
Okay.
And I had asked on that. Okay, next item is contingency transfers.
This actually is a, through the SCROG, a regional performance grant, our, our share of it. You'll notice on the other page, we actually approved this for the '23, '24 year. There was some confusion as to whether we were going to follow the SCROG model and, and what they were going to get for us. We did decide during '24, '25 to proceed with it, but it's just, we thought the PO was locked in, but it was not. So it lapsed, and the '24 went back into fund balance, and this is just reaffirmating and adding contingency for '24, '25.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilor Zampiano, seconded by Councilor Goad. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay, next is finance report as of September 30th.
September 30, the report is in front of you. There's still some funkiness on there that I'm working with Michael Fumiati to affix, where you see the negative encumbrances in a couple of departments. Starting at the top, on the revenue section, the tax collection that we look at monthly on a 52.9% last year, up to 53.1% this year, slightly better, and total revenues, again, slightly better than last year at this time, 45.3% to 44.9%. On the expense side, as I've mentioned previously, that consolidated cost center is a new item that we're still trying to get our feet wet and figure out what's going in there versus not going in there. So that will be work in progress throughout the year. Aside from that, there's nothing else that is coming up overextended, expended, and again, just about on target with last year, 29.9% last year total. This year, we're at 30 even. So, report's unremarkable.
And the next item is approval of tax refund.
I'll make a motion to approve a big tax refund of $2,540 and 12 cents, stipulated on page 98.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Hey, Anthony?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it common to have, or normal to have the animal control to be already at 100%?
Yeah, it's, it's tied up in a PO.
Oh, okay.
That's the deal with East Haven, so the whole 135 is locked in a PO.
Oh, I see. Okay, thanks.
Anthony, why are we having trouble with those, those columns that you were talking about? Why do we not know what's going in there?
Uh, we know what's going in there. It's, it's POs that didn't flow from one year to the next properly. Payments that were in the 20, belonged to '24, '25, but were paid in '25, '26, and the PO theoretically should have rolled with it, but they didn't. That's why you have a negative encumbrance on that mayor and council one. It's, I think it's the last payment to the auditor from last year that came into this year, that should have gone back to last year. Similarly, there's another problem somewhere.
Is this still Munis-related?
It's a combination of Munis and operator error. The POs, the problem we've had for multiple years is the POs don't seem to be rolling from one year to the next, the ones that need to roll. So when you pay it, like in the current year, theoretically, the PO should have, the open balance in the PO from last year should have come into a prior year encumbrance account, which you would have charged and would have it all. Pretty, pretty, but the PO isn't going properly. And the same, if you look on the economic development, too, Ron, you see there's a negative $140 expenditure there. I think that's a function of items that got put into the consolidated cost center, but I'd get a better answer for that one, too. The premise for that consolidated cost center is with trying to take nondiscretionary items and make them simpler for the approval process, things like utility bills, telephone, fuel oil, things that you really have no means to contest, and run them all through there. But again, it's, this is a transition year where we're trying to figure out what's going in there, what's not going in there. It may be a failed experiment, we may go back next year to putting it back in the, in the individual departments, but we're going to try this and see how, if it, if it makes life easier. But so far, it's been a challenge.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, next item is citizen statements and petitions.
They got Lisa's thing.
That's executive. But that's executive session.
Cliff Potter, Northford. I've always been beaten on you guys to get professionalism both in the planning and zoning and inland and wetlands. And now I'm asking for a little more professionalism from council members. We have people that spend many hours giving you reports, and then they're kind of just questioned and questioned and questioned and questioned. I won't mention any names. But it's getting old to watch in the crowd. We had people here that put many hours into getting their facts right. And I just feel that some people just don't have the background to ask the questions they're asking. They're not familiar with the subject. And when it comes to the fire department, we're not talking about metal and tires. We're talking about human lives. And if you want to go for a paid department, keep acting like this, because you'll get one. I mean, these guys, they went to a house fire all night long at Beach Street, worked that fire. And like you say, the next morning, they went to their jobs. Or what more could you ask of them? We have a high response, thanks to this man and thanks to Colangelo. You've got the morale up. When it comes to asking for the tools, I know you have to watch the pocketbook, but you also have to take the personal safety. These guys are not career firefighters. They're volunteers. That means they don't cost you anything. But give them the equipment, give them the safety, and give them the respect. I went to that commission meeting, and maybe you should start, Bruce goes, maybe you should start, if you've got questions, tonight wasn't the night to ask those questions, because they were clearly presented at the fire commission meeting. And they're not asking for fluff. They're just asking for the stuff to get the job done, and it's got to be done safely. If we lose one of those guys, if they're not in a seat next time they have it, and we lost them at a fire, who's going to be responsible for that death? Is it going to come back on you guys? Could maybe you made that one little extra nagging cut that shouldn't have been made? I mean, God bless them. They don't even give gas money to get to the firehouse. They use their own gas, their own time, their own vehicles, but they do it willingly, because they like this town. And I tell you, I love this town. I love our police department. I love our fire department. You guys usually do a good job. But I see a pattern here I don't like. And I hope the voters see that pattern, too, because it was pretty tough to watch. Now, I want to apologize for the sidebar with the chief of police. I want to compliment that man. Due to my Vietnam experience, I suffer PTSD. They paved the road in front of my house. It got quiet. It's wonderful. Now they're threatening to do rumble strips. Now, this, this engineer, I don't know how he deals with the state. I have had so much time tied up on a Zoom meeting that didn't Zoom, emails, I petitioned all my neighbors, I got Martin Looney's aide involved, Christine Cohen, Vinnie Candelaro. And I've even emailed Garrett, his name of the DOT, because I need answers. Are you going to cut these strips into the front of my house so in the middle of the night, as a tractor trailer goes over the lines, it's going to reverberate, and I'll lose, I lose a night's sleep anyway most of the time, but this'll, this'll just decrease my chances of a good night's sleep. I'm getting somewheres, believe it or not. It's very slow and painful. This has been going on since August. I took time out of my vacation to try to get on that Zoom meeting. With the police chief's help, we may see an end to this. But he's now, I heard back today from the head of the Department of Transportation, because you can't get anything from any aides. And now our chief has to get something with the traffic control to, it's got double passing zones from my driveway right to the top of Eight Mile Hill. Now, if they cut these cuts in, they're going to be, everybody's going to, it'll be going all night long. So we're fighting it politely with respect to the, but I need answers. And luckily, Lovelace is getting someplace, so we're, we're making, so that's what the sidebar was. And we, we were allowed, because, yeah, he was showing me good news for a change, which I haven't heard in a long time. Now, the other thing is, you were at the planning, or the inland and wetlands commission, where one of the members raised hell about Robert's rules. Is that affecting the quality of the note-taking and the notes? He wanted to dummy down some of the, you need that history. I don't know why we have to revert to Robert's rules where they're so bland, you can't find out what happened. Is that, so you were questioning some of the, the notes that were taken. Is that a direct effect of this guy's actions? Do you know that?
I, I, I was just in the audience listening to it. I didn't comment on his, I deferred to the town attorney and maybe, Brian, I mean, Robert's rules is like a guidance.
Robert's rules are a set, if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
A set of rules that govern proceedings of a group, of a body such as this. It's the Freedom of Information Act of the state of Connecticut that deals with munis. And the only thing the Freedom of Information Act requires the minutes to show are those in attendance.
Okay.
The items that came before the commission, and the votes, and how people voted. So they, there need not be any detail on the substance of any discussion. It can simply be item one, fire department engine purchase.
Yeah.
Motion, vote, that's it. The minutes don't have to reflect any discussion. We talked about what color the truck is, whether it's.
Okay, yeah.
That does not have to be in minutes. That's, that's.
So what could it have been it?
The minutes are to show you what items were discussed and voted on. They're not a verbatim transcript. The only time you get a verbatim transcript is at a zoning hearing that's required. Minutes are not required to have any more detail than that.
So if we enforce them, and luckily, we have the TV, but I mean, other, what, how do you keep track of what happened? Or you just, we have for years, right? What are we, what are we doing right, or what are we doing wrong?
Your minutes, it depends on the community. Some towns are very brief, others are more loquacious. But it, you know, they're not supposed to be a full recitation of everything that happened. You've got the backup materials, you've got the, look, those old minutes have to show. They don't have to say, he said this, she said that, he said that, she said that. That's not the purpose of minutes.
Okay. So luckily, we have the video that we can go, but that's not always available for all of, I mean, a, a problem happens on Thursday nights. We're planning and zoning and Board of Ad meet. I guess we only have the one YouTube channel. And then if we're lucky, the planning and zoning might get videotaped. It doesn't know what's happened. So I mean, again, the other night, I don't know what happened, if planning and zoning had a meeting or not.
They did not.
Okay, so, yeah, I, but the.
They, they canceled both of their October meetings, I believe, and the next one is November 6.
All right. Well, in your defense, I mean, you guys do a good job. We should be able to keep track of you doing a good job. I mean, I don't know. I, I, I'm getting old and crotchety. So I apologize for the sidebar. It was good to hear that something happened today. Now it's up to the chief to do more work, but he's been very, very helpful. But I've had to use, I used, I have a close friend who knows Martin Looney. I had to get him involved. Christine Cohen, I mean, I'm on first-name basis with Sue, her secretary. Vinnie's been involved. And again, they're threatening to cut the grooves into the road. And we're trying to show them they're not needed. And I think even Jimmy posted the fact that you people, I think even came up with a resolution that they're not needed in our town. And I think he's passed that on. But it falls, when you're working with the state, they just don't care. I mean, I'm sad to say, it's been a very, very strenuous and, and hard fight, but they just don't care. So, thank you, and good luck on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other citizen statements? Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
A motion to executive session.
To include?
To include town attorney, town manager.
Town clerk.
Town clerk, assistant town manager. I think that's it, right? Anthony, you want in?
Sure.
Finance manager. He's in.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Motion to go and take executive session by Deputy Mayor McMillan, seconded by Councilor Palladino. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going in.